Evening. I will call the meeting to order. Our Vice President Laura Toy will offer the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Welcome all to the 1,941st regular meeting of the Livonia City Council. This will be a voting meeting, and minutes of this meeting will be approved on April 4th of 2022 at the next regular meeting. We have our Deputy Clerk Lori Miller with us tonight. Ms. Miller, will you take the role?
Absolutely. Vice President Toy?
Here.
Councilmember Barr?
Here.
Councilmember Donovan?
Here.
Councilmember Morgan?
Here.
Councilmember McCullough?
Present.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Here.
President Jolly?
Present. The council is fully represented. At this time, I will seek a motion for the meeting minutes of the March 14th, 2022 minute meeting. I'm going to warn the audience at this time, there's a lot of people here tonight who would like to speak on many different topics. It's important for everybody at this time to hold the proper decorum and respect other people as they're speaking. If you're here to speak tonight, you will have a chance to speak, okay? The time to interrupt people is not now or ever. Thank you. I'll seek a motion at this time for the minutes.
Mr. Chair, I would offer approval of the minutes of the March 14th meeting without amendment or correction.
Support. Thank you. Motion from McIntyre, support from Donovan. Any council communication announcements? Any audience communication in regards to the minutes? I see none. Ms. Miller, will you take the role?
Vice President?
Council communication?
No, regarding the minutes.
I apologize. Thank you.
Please proceed.
Vice President Toy?
Yes.
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember Donovan?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
And President Jolly?
Aye, the minutes are approved. At this time, we will move to audience communication. Anybody in the audience is welcome at this time to approach the podium on the side to address items that are not on the agenda this evening. You will be limited to three minutes to speak about any items that are not on this evening's agenda. Does anybody like to address council at this time for audience communication? There appears to be none. We will move on to council communication and announcements. Mr. Donovan, I believe you had something?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to recognize a friend of mine, family, they're Livonia family, the Geisinger family, Renee, she's an active member in the community, and she's unfortunately come into some really tough health situation. She's been in the hospital, and she's been facing some really tough times, and her family's been really resolute behind her. They own a small business here in Livonia, JB Tools, they do a lot for our community. I would just like to keep Renee, Renee strong, there's something that's going around our community right now, keep her in our prayers, and say a prayer for her, and the well wishes to their family, and thanks for what you do for Livonia. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Donovan. Ms. McIntyre?
Normally, on March 23rd, we would be wishing our former mayor, community leader, and dear friend to many of us, former Mayor Jack Engerbretson, a very happy birthday, and specifically this year, a very happy 85th birthday. Instead, sadly, we are extending our deepest condolences to Jack and Ceni and the rest of their family on the passing of their beloved daughter last Saturday, Cindy, last Saturday. She was only 63 years old. Cindy had had numerous health issues over the years, but with a great medical team and the love and care of her family, she overcame them. Unfortunately, she had been hospitalized for about six weeks and had a stroke, and despite excellent medical care this time, and again, the unbelievable love and care of her family, she was not able to survive it, and she's passed away. Memorial service is planned for 11:00 a.m. Monday at RG and GR Harris on Farmington Road in Livonia with an hour of visitation prior to that. And everyone who knew Jack and Cindy, Jack and Ceni or Cindy, and would like to pay their respects is invited to come. There is, I believe, the obituary is published on RG and GR's website, so our condolences and sympathies to the Engerbretson family.
Thank you, Ms. McIntyre.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Anybody else on the council? I see no one else. At this time, we would like to wish happy birthday to Mayor Engerbretson, our emergency manager, Brian Kahn, and our very own President Emeritus Kathleen McIntyre, who will all be celebrating birthdays in the upcoming week here. We have new data on items 13 and 19. We will address that when we hit those items on the agenda. At this time, we have no announcements from the administration or reports. We will move on to the consent agenda. The consent agenda is items 1 through 11, these items are voted on as a single item. This does not mean that they are any less important, but that they have been fully studied and require no additional study from the council. Can I have a motion for the consent agenda?
Support.
We have a motion to approve the consent agenda from Toy, supported by McCullough. Does anybody in the audience have any kind of communication in regards to the consent agenda? There appears to be none. Ms. Miller, will you take the role on items 1 through 11, the consent agenda?
Vice President Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember Donovan?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
President Jolly?
Aye, excuse me, aye. Consent agenda passes. We will move on to item number 12. This is Unfinished Business, a report out from the Public Safety and Health Committee from the meeting of March 9th, 2022. Ms. McIntyre is the chair of that subcommittee and will be reporting out on the matter. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman, Chairman Jolly. The Public Safety, Health and Environment Committee met at 7:00 p.m. on Wednesday, March 9th, upstairs in the city council chambers, and the committee members present, and I would just remind everyone and ask them to please silence their phones, the committee members present were myself, the chair, Rob Donovan, our vice chair, and Councilmember Scott Morgan, all the committee members were there, and also Councilman Barr was also in attendance from the council. We also had our Assistant City Attorney Leo Neville and our planner Scott Miller, and the additional attendees were Terry Seaver, Ron Emling, and Mike Fields. We convened the meeting at 7:01 p.m. The formal discussion topic was Council Resolution 18-22, which is the subject matter of developing the property located at 34437 Rosati Avenue as specified in Petition 2021-10-02-22 submitted by Century 21 Row with potential environmental and solutions. I led the meeting, and the first resident concern that was addressed was the level of noise. The closest home measured from the far back corner of that home's garage, and so again, that's the point, the residential point, that's closest to the proposed building, would be located 140, I'm sorry, 110 feet from the wall that separates the residential and the industrial areas. The petitioner's business is located, an additional, or proposed business is located an additional 140 feet from the wall. So the minimum distance between the closest corner of any residential building and the proposed business would be 250 feet. The audio backup warning beeps of commercial vehicles, tow trucks, delivery trucks, et cetera, are designed to be audible up to a distance of only 200 feet, and that assumes that there are, that there are no sound barriers such as trees, solid fences, et cetera. The second resident concern of spills and groundwater contamination was discussed. The petitioner brought to us a storm sewer filter system that would be placed in all municipal sewers located on the property, and also a blue sock device that would be placed around all storm drains to pre-filter any runoffs. The petitioner said that in addition to being committed to all required environmental rules, pointed out it would be in his own economic interest to maintain robust environmental protections. And we did have an approving resolution that was offered, and the item was recommended to come out of committee and placed on the agenda of this evening, the regular meeting agenda, which is now March 23rd, 2022.
Thank you, Ms. McIntyre. Do I have a motion from the council at this time?
Mr. President?
Mr. Barr?
I'd like to offer denying for the sake of discussion.
Support.
Motion to deny from Barr, support from McIntyre. Mr. Barr, would you like to kick us off?
I would. We've obviously, as Councilwoman McIntyre mentioned, we've had a lot of discussion over this. There was, I believe, a public hearing, either that or a study meeting, I forget which one. And then a committee meeting, which she just reported out on, and so we've had a lot of time to look into this. There, I do have some questions that have arisen on this that I would like to ask, I don't know if the business owner's here, or the property owner, or if someone's, I guess, if the business owner's here, there's been some new information that's provided that I'd like to ask some questions if you'd be willing to come to the podium. There he is.
Would the interested parties come up to the podium, please? Please proceed, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President. I assume you want him to say his name and address for the record, or?
Sure. Name and address, please.
Mike Fields, 14310 21 and 1/2 Mile Road.
Okay.
Mr. Fields, thanks for being here tonight. So since our committee meeting, sorry, I lost files here, give me a moment. Got stuck in Windows. Here we go. Had a chance to drive by your location on Grand River, right? I don't have the address in front of me right now, but 26120 Grand River, I believe you had said was one of the addresses of your business, right?
Up until February 22nd, we no longer occupy that space.
Okay. Do you want to, how long had you been there prior to that point?
About six months.
Okay. I believe in each of our previous meetings, that's been the address that's been referenced. Can you explain what's happened that you're not there anymore?
It was used as office space. It wasn't, it was not fit for storing vehicles. It doesn't have the capacity to hold any amount of, large amount of vehicles.
Okay. Do, was, so one of the things that's come to my attention is that that, that building has a notice on it that it's uninhabitable. Is, does that have, do you have any insight as to that, and did that correspond with your time there?
The business building itself is inhabitable just fine. It's a certificate of occupancy discrepancy because it was an addition to a collision shop at one time.
Okay. What, when did you leave that building?
I believe it was the 23rd of February.
Okay. And I see that legal notice was dated the 22nd of February.
Right.
Because some of the concerns we had, and you said you were there for six months?
Correct.
Okay. So one of the things that I noticed when I was there is just the, and obviously when we're looking at a waiver use for a piece of property like this, you know, we're, it's a waiver use. It means it's, that waiver use is there on purpose so that council can have a chance to thoroughly review certain uses as they're coming in there. And, and so naturally, previous track record of maintaining property and stuff like that comes into play. When I, when I look at that property, the lawn out along Grand River is just absolutely destroyed. It looks like vehicles have repeatedly driven over it. And this is more than just one or two vehicles, this is over a period of time. Was that that way when you were there?
That's been that way for, yeah, well beyond before that. And to be perfectly honest with you, that property is not a good example of representation of a tow yard. There's no line parking, there's no gate, there's no security, there's no fence. The building itself is probably less than 3,000 square feet. There's four to five different companies that occupied, that occupied that space at one time. So those, comparing the Grand River location to the potential Livonia location is not even like comparing apples to oranges. If you want to go on a track record of our business, we had a leased property in Livonia about four years ago, and we maintained to see certificate of occupancy until our lease ran out, and we had no problems with the city of Livonia.
What was the address of that property?
36130, I believe it was, Schoolcraft, right in the back of the McKesson Building.
I'm sorry?
36...
Yeah, and I got the address, I didn't hear what you said after that.
Behind the McKesson Building, right there on Schoolcraft, between Middle Belt and Merriman.
And when were you there?
2016 to 2018.
16 to 2018, okay. So when you were at the Grand River property, you were using that for what then? If it wasn't a suitable property for your business?
Office space, there's four different office spaces inside there.
Do you know who occupies that building now?
No one.
Well, I fear somebody does, that there were cars that had been towed in that were all over the lot when I went by yesterday.
If there were cars all over the lot, that's news to me.
Okay.
There's a sign, it's clearly on the, it's been stickered, it is not for usage.
Okay. Right. There are at least two other companies that are currently registered there. There's a rideaway towing and a 10G towing. Are you familiar with either of those companies?
Yes, we all see each other, we all saw each other when we were there occupying the business.
Okay. But you have no relationship to either one of those companies?
No. Those are separate entities from mine.
You said your address is 21 and 1/2 Mile Road?
Correct.
Is that, what city is that in?
It's in Marshall.
That's in Marshall. And so is that your main address?
That's our billing address.
Okay. So can you help me, not being in the towing business, forgive me, this might be a dumb question, if I was in the towing business, I might know better, but your building, your business is centered in Marshall, but you're trying to set up a place in Livonia. Is that, I mean, Marshall's not exactly close.
No, it's about an hour and 20 minutes from here.
Right.
Marshall is no small distance between here and there. We ran our business in Livonia for years. We've been servicing Livonia, Farmington, Bloomfield, everything on the west side, Redford and so on. And every time you lease a property, you try to lease something that's remotely close to the area that you service. That's the reason we're choosing to build in Livonia.
So what is out in Marshall, then?
That's our headquarters, that's where we do all of our billing. All of our accounts are held with Agro and all the roadside assistance companies that we deal with.
So you just have offices out there?
No, that is, part of the land is used for office and all the part is our home. It's a home office.
Okay, got it. And then since 2018, you were using, well, I assume, have you just been using other local places for offices in addition to the place at Tamaroff where you've been storing vehicles?
Correct.
Okay.
And we have a storage yard in Norville as well.
Okay. That's all the questions I have. Thank you for being here. That's all the questions I have at this point. I don't know if any other council members have any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Barr. Council, anything additional?
I do.
Mr. Morgan?
Yes, sir. I just have a couple of quick questions. As far as businesses that you own, some informations came to light, do you own 10G towing?
I do not own 10G towing.
Okay, whose business is that, and how is it connected to you?
It's not connected to Accelerated.
Okay, how many businesses do you own, and what's their names?
I own Accelerated Towing, that's it.
Okay.
I think people may get businesses confused far as people owning them because you may work together on accident scene, but it's clearly in notes or wherever you're found that add that I am not the owner of 10G towing. That is a whole separate entity.
Are you all set, Mr. Morgan?
I am, thank you.
Okay, sir, is there anything that you'd like to tell us at this time, as the petitioner?
If there's any more questions, I can answer them, but I mean...
We have no additional questions from the council at this time, so I'll ask you to sit down.
Thank you.
And we will go to audience communication. Anybody who is interested in speaking in regards to this item can come up to the podium at this time. You are limited to two minutes to address the item, and I will ask Ms. McIntyre, our parliamentarian, to keep track. Your name and address, sir?
Sure. My name is Oday Mereway, an attorney. My office address is 14339 Ford Road, second floor, Dearborn, Michigan, 48126. I'll be brief, since I only have two minutes. I represent a group that's involved, that's a neighborhood association, excuse me. Alden Village, sorry, I couldn't remember, brain fart. I represent Alden Village, a group of concerned citizens here, who are here to oppose this waiver of use. The reason being, one of three reasons. Pollution, we talked about the beeping. It was mentioned that the beeping should go, can only go up to 200, 200 feet, but a simple Google search, you'll find that the, the company that sells it says it's actually at least 200 feet. So it's, it's a pretty big discrepancy there. Also, there's talk of these sewer filters. Now, the sewer filters are designed as a Band-Aid, so if you have a disaster or if something occurs, it's very, that oil is leaking, you put in one of these filters, you put in one of these socks as a mediation, not as a long-term solution. These aren't designed as a long-term solution. You've received a letter from one of these concerted citizens that outlines that, but if you're going to approve this, you should know that this is a temporary solution that needs, requires constant maintenance. We've heard from the owner who said that they lit, they were at this facility for six months that was, from pictures, not well-maintained. That's a track record, guys. If you come into a business and you're not fixing it up, not maintaining it, that's a track record. Here again, you have a property in an area that already is fragile, a groundwater basin that's already fragile, and you're adding stress to it. Even, even at their best, these filters stop 80%. They stop only 80%.
Listen, excuse me, sir.
Sorry.
We're not going to do this. Excuse me? Proceed. They just wasted your time.
I understand, sorry. So it's only 80% effective. You're leaving 20% there. For a groundwater table that's already affected by poisons and pollution, adding another 20% even is going to be a problem. You, these citizens have lived there for, they've had house, I've had a client who is 20 years almost from a centennial home. These houses have been there for a long time, these residents have been there for a long time, they're asking you to protect them, to protect them from any further pollution, whatever it may be, whether it be audio, toxic, or business. Thank you.
Mr. President, Mr. Chair?
Mr. Barr?
May I ask this particular speaker a question?
Sure.
Uh, sir?
Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry.
I'd like to ask you a question.
Yeah, absolutely.
Can you just help me understand, with this being an industrial sector that's over there, I mean, there's a, there's industrial businesses throughout that area that have cars parked on them all the time, I think any one of us at any moment, or at some point in the life of our home has had a car that's been sitting in the driveway, and we found some evidence of leakage on the driveway. I mean, I certainly have it in my garage, I'm sure many of us do. How, how do you perceive this business to be different from any of the other businesses that would be, particularly in industrial section, when our concern is occasional leakage from vehicles?
Thank you. Well, first, for the one hand, it's a 24-hour tow yard, so for, with regard to the noise pollution, it's going to be nonstop noise in the middle of the night, so it's not like any other industrial property that's around the area because it's 24 hours rather than during business hours. So it's going to add to the, both the noise and the hustle and bustle around the residents adding untold problems. But on the other hand, with regards to the drainage, these are cars that are, for example, the reason that, I'm sure the question was asked as to whether or not accelerated towing is affiliated with one of these other companies, which was admitted it was, by the way, they did say that, he said he didn't own it, but he was affiliated with them, he worked with them. And the reason this was brought up was because in February, if you all recall, there was a pileup on I-696 that there was towing that was considered predatory, thousands of dollars in cost were charged, it was a huge scandal, and I'm sure you all heard about it. Well, that was for these companies that are affiliated with this.
Okay, sir, you're all set. Mr. Barr's question's been answered, I appreciate it.
I just, all right. Well, I had one more thing to say was that the cars are...
You're all set, sir, thank you. Ms. McIntyre?
I certainly...
Listen, if we keep having interruptions from this side over here, I'll call in adjournment of the meeting, and we'll go take a break until people can be quiet. You have an opportunity to speak. If you'd like to, get up and get in line. You'll have two minutes to address us so we can see your face and we can listen to what you have to say. Ms. McIntyre?
I certainly appreciate the comments of the attorney who just spoke, who represents the property owners. I do find it very disappointing that we had a committee meeting. The reason, and we had no residents attend the meeting. One of the reasons that we have committee meetings are we go into a deep dive, and it provides an opportunity for people to speak without the two-minute restriction, and no one showed up. And we did receive information after that committee meeting from a resident who I know was unable to attend, and we look into things after committee meetings, but we had a committee meeting, and we had not a single resident there. And when an attorney gets up to addresses, I would just like personally to remind the attorneys who address us that you're addressing an elected body, not a, not a courtroom. So thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Ms. McIntyre. Sir, your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Bruce Tenniswood, 34921 Beacon Street in Livonia. I live in the subdivision that's just adjacent to the property that we're discussing, and I want to tell you that, that I am the one that could not make the meeting. Unfortunately, I crushed my foot the night before and couldn't walk. And I elected to not tell a bunch of the other residents because I didn't want it to turn into, I wanted to be a productive discussion, and I know all three members of the committee, I knew, I knew how it would be handled, and it was just unfortunate that I found out later on of some of the stories that were told to you, and that's why I felt like it was, it was my place to clarify the information that was told to you that was just half-truths. So I apologize for people not being there, but I, I guess I was trying to not have it be a circus, to be honest with you, in a small room. But these people are all very, very concerned about the situation, and I, I guess I kind of hoped at the committee that, that everyone would see through the lies that were being told to you. But this is, I guess I equate it like this. Imagine building a playhouse out of razor blades, and the reason that you would do that is because you've got a good box of Band-Aids, and it's just not effective, and that's what we're doing here. We're talking about approving a place in a fragile environmental landscape and just say, well, we'll be able to put a New Pig product in, and that'll take care of it. It won't take care of it. And then when you look at the way that they take care of the place that they're at already, there is absolutely no way that these products are going to be maintained the way they need to. I'm very familiar with New Pig products, they're excellent products when they're maintained right, but they have to be maintained, and that's not going to happen. We just, please ask that you just please deny this and let's move on. We have given zero resistance to any development back there, not one. You just approved one just recently, and you got zero resistance from us.
Five seconds, Mr. Tenniswood.
But, but this one is a no-go, and we cannot accept it. Thank you.
Do we have any other audience communication? Okay, seeing no further audience communication, the motion on the table is a denial at this time. Ms. McIntyre?
I appreciate your comments, Mr. Tenniswood, and I think I made reference to the fact that we understood there were some extenuating circumstances, why people couldn't be there. You're one person, and I appreciate you're not wanting to create a circus, as you put it, but there are a lot of people here this evening to address this issue. And all of those people presumably have access to the internet, to the telephone, to email, to follow committee meetings, to watch recordings of our meetings, to read the minutes, or to contact any one of us by email or telephone. And other than your comments or your information, which was very helpful, well researched and extensive, I did not receive one phone call on this, so thank you.
Mr. McCullough?
Thank you, Mr. President. When this was before us, I think about a month ago, I did not support it then, and I will not be supporting this tonight, I'll be voting in favor of the denial. Couple things just to kind of clarify, the intensity of the proposed use and the hours of operation are inconsistent with the surrounding areas. The proposal creates significant adverse impacts on the neighboring properties. The preventative maintenance that goes with these filtration systems that have been brought before us, I know one of the, the attorney did bring this up, it does require preventative maintenance. And just as I stated at the last meeting, you could, it's all fine and dandy if this gets approved as is, but how do we know that this is going to be maintained properly over the course? We won't. We will know after it's too late, and there's an environmental impact. So for those reasons, I will be supporting the denial. Thank you.
Mr. Barr?
Yeah, uh, Bruce, sorry, you probably have a sore foot, and I'm gonna ask you to walk again, do you mind stepping up if I'm asking a question?
He was a firefighter, he'll be alright.
I'm just gonna ask you the same question that I asked the attorney, 'cause it's, it is just a question that I think is legitimate that I started with. I, I fully, fully understand your concerns, but I, I guess, I, I, I'd like your perspective on why this one business poses so much more of a threat for the reasons you've said, you were worried about fluid leakage, and I understand why. But relative to the, all of the other businesses that are in that area, all of which have many vehicles parked there all the time, all I'm sure, like any variety of ages and a variety, variety of levels of dis, of repair, um, why, why, why is this so particularly of concern?
Because all those other vehicles get driven in, in the morning, and they get driven home at night because they are drivable. And the vehicles that we're talking about here have been towed in because they are not drivable. And non-drivable cars are usually crashed cars, and crashed cars leak. I spent my career on car accidents, and I watched countless vehicles. These people told the planning commission that by the time they get there, the, the fluids are all leaked out. Fortunately or unfortunately, they said, they're all leaked out. I, I'm sorry, but I spent my career watching vehicles pulled up onto a tow truck, and then they have to put a, a new Pig product underneath them to keep the oil from running off the tow truck as it's going down the road. Crashed vehicles leak, period. That's the difference.
Do you know, Mr. Tenniswood, and I know this wasn't your business, so if your answer's "I don't know," that's totally fine, okay? But you're who's up here right now. The, the type of measures that we've explored with this business, and what they came to our committee meeting and showed us, the equipment that you referred to earlier, is it typical, do you have any idea whether tow yard, other tow yards, do, do they typically put those kinda precautions in place? Because tow yards exist all over the place, we have another tow yard in Livonia.
Right.
Is it typical for them to take that level of precaution?
I wouldn't be able to speak to that, 'cause I don't know, but I can tell you that I've been on very significant hazmat incidents downstream-
Sure.
-from rec, from junkyards, not necessarily towing yards, uh, because I, I was never really affiliated with one exactly like this, but potato, patato, crashed cars leak. So, I, I wish I could answer better than that, but I can't.
Thanks.
Okay, we'll do a last call for audience communication. This'll be the last audience communication here, then we'll call the vote.
Uh, yes, Ronald Emling, owner, developer of, uh, the said property, um, 34422 Rosati. Just to address a couple of issues that the attorneys have and, and the general audiences have, and, uh, we had a meeting on March 9th, and we, we thought that this was pretty much resolved as far as, um, this stumbling block to get this build done. Mike's proven to us self that he's a, he's a stand-up businessman. I wanted to address the issues with the, uh, the noise for one, and we talked about this at the other meeting, the little be, the little backup beepers that might go off from time to time in the middle of the night, from a nighttime tow, is no comparison to the train that goes by there eighteen to twenty-two times a day in a twenty-four-hour period. And we explained this to the meeting last, uh, March 9th as well. That noise is twenty times louder, and those, those sirens are designed to do a whole different, uh, uh, noise and warning, uh, than a backup beeper. There's no complaints about the train that goes by eighteen to twenty-two, twenty-two times a day from these people. My building adjacent to the railroad tracks, so I hear it every day when it goes by. There's the noise issue. The, uh, the issue with the, uh, uh, the filtration systems and the drain, we went over that in detail, we went very deep in detail with that, with this industry standard, and it's, it's a, uh, it's a system from the Pig that he, uh, Mr., I forget his name, just announced it, it's, it's designed to catch, uh, all kinds of solvent, uh, solvents, oils, antifreeze, and, uh, liquids from cars. That's what they do. If the drain, if the filters are clogged, the water won't drain, so if it's, for some reason, it gets to be an oversight, and somebody doesn't see, they forgot or didn't service the filter, the water's not gonna drain 'cause the filter's gonna be clogged. It has to be serviced at that point. There's no getting around not servicing your filter, your parking lot's just gonna fill with water. That's what they're designed to do, to tell the, the business owner, your filter's clogged. Your water's not gonna drain, your filter's clogged. So you service your filter. The system is an industry standard, it's a, it's a great system, and with that said, uh, I think we covered pretty much the same stuff we covered on our meeting on March 9th.
Ten seconds left.
Yep, I'm, I'm good. Thank you very much, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you all. That will conclude audience communication. Ms. Miller, please take the-
Mr. Chair. I, thanks for your patience with me. I wanna say some, I need to explain something. First of all, I wanna thank Mr. Fields for being here tonight, um, and the concerns that I had, it's, it's so hard with something like this, uh, because you're trying to make decisions in a meeting with information flowing to you in the moment. I will say that in the past meetings that we've had, I've been satisfied with his answers, and the me, and the answers that he gave tonight seem to answer my concerns, um, but there's, there's further things I would wanna look into with that. I have more questions just related to the environmental thing. The noise thing for me is not an issue at all. I said that at the committee thing, I, I don't, I agree with what was just said here, I don't see that as an issue with this property. We have the environmental issue, and then we have some concerns about what we thought was a track record of the business, but quite frankly, I feel like the answers we got tonight address that. I've got a live on answering questions, I recognize this as a regular meeting, I hate to do this, and if somebody else in council is, you guys can vote this down, I'm gonna withdraw my denial, and I'd like it, and I'd like to put a motion to send this back to committee of the whole, so we have time to further investigate some of the things that we've heard live tonight.
Support.
The two original makers of the motion are both in concurrence. Anybody else in council? Audience, in regards to the change of motion? Ms. Miller, take the roll, please.
President, uh, Vice President Toy.
Aye.
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavick?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
President Jolly?
Aye. The matter will, will be called out of committee again, as it was previous. I would encourage any residents who have an interest in having a further discussion in regards to this, pay attention to when the committee meeting is. When we have committee meetings, they're upstairs, it's a little bit less formal, there's a more of an opportunity for a dialogue and things like that. So, thank you all for being here tonight, please express yourself and let us know what you, what you want, but in the appropriate way, and allow other people to speak when it's their turn. All right, with that being said, we will move on to item number thirteen, a request to waive the city's noise ordinance from Saint Rafka Maranite Catholic Church in order to hold a cultural festival at 32765 Linden Street on Saturday, August 20th, 2022, from 3:00 PM to 12:00 AM, and on Sunday, August 21st, from 1:00 PM to 9:00 PM. Is anybody here from Saint Rafka's Catholic Church? Please come on up to the podium here, if you don't mind, I'll note that we do have uh, new data in regards to this matter. It's a letter from, uh, the pastor of Saint Rafka, Father Constantine, uh, giving us some details, and I'll note for the record that this is something that happens on a regular basis for the last couple of years.
Mr. Chair, I'll offer an approving if you'd like a motion on the floor, sir.
Support.
Thank you. Motion from Toy, support from Donavick. Ma'am, your name and address, please.
My name is Joanna Danowski, um, I live in Farmington at 32808 Slocum Drive, I'm the parish secretary for Saint Rafka Church at 32765 Linden Street.
Thank you, ma'am. So you have an approving motion on the floor, is there anything you'd like to tell us in regards to the festival?
Yes, um, the original, um, ordinance waiver that we had submitted originally stated for just Saturday and Sunday, um, our festival committee recently had a meeting, um, last week, and we would also like to add Friday night to that waiver as well, from Fri, 5:00 PM to midnight.
Do the maker and the supporter of the motion-
It's fine, Mr. Chair.
It's fine, Mr. Chair.
Okay, that's now adopted as part of the motion, anything else you'd like to add?
No, I think that's it.
Okay, I think when the, the father's been here in the past, he's mentioned that this is welcome, uh, anybody from the community is welcome, rather, right?
Yep, yep, the whole community is welcome, and most of the neighbors who live by the church, um, come for the weekend, um, a lot of them actually volunteer to help us as well, um, so they, they do enjoy it.
Sounds good, thank you.
Mr. President?
I'm gonna go to Ms. McIntyre, 'cause I saw her first.
Sure.
Um, I, I would just like to ask you to be very cognizant, uh, midnight's late for a lot of people, and I, I know that's what's been requested in the past, and I don't recall ever getting complaint after one of your events. Recently, another, uh, religious organization in the city had an event, and they usually comply with all the, uh, timing, they did not, and it was upsetting to a lot of neighbors, so I just, and I've been to your festival many times, it's wonderful that a lot of the neighbors attend, but I would just ask you all to keep that in mind, and, um, to make sure that the, the bands stop at midnight.
Yes, yes, of course, we usually advertise, um, our hours actually ending at eleven, um, we usually just ask for midnight in case something runs a little long, yep.
Thank you.
Mr. Donavick?
Thank you, Mr. President, uh, thank you for being here tonight, I'm excited to see our religious organizations hosting events again and, and welcoming the community, so thank you for that. Question, have you spoken to our law department or, um, the ordinance department and put together a plan to make sure that you are conscientious of the noise and making sure that the residents nearby aren't affected necessarily?
Yep, we, we have reached out to them, um, and our festival committee is currently working on finalizing the plan, and I've, I've spoken with the fire marshal and the building permit, um, committee already, and we're in the process of setting up a formal meeting with them with, um, law enforcement as well.
I love to see when government works that way, uh, we had a meeting last year, and in relation to what my colleague, uh, councilwoman McIntyre referenced, another religious organization, and, uh, they do a great job, much like yourselves, uh, but there were some residents that had some trouble with some of the noise and whatnot, so we love to have a good time and, and people enjoy themselves, but also be cognizant of, of the surrounding areas as well, so looking forward to attending and, uh, hopefully a successful night. Thank you.
Absolutely, thank you.
Ms. Toy?
Thank you, uh, Mr. Chair, um, just real quick to the petitioner, um, great festivals, great food, great people, all of the above, um, but as has been stated by two of my colleagues, um, we have had situations that people get really upset, and I don't wanna see that happen to you because you've been doing a super job. Parking becomes, I know you do a great job at parking, but on the streetways, I, there were a few neighbors that had contacted me about people blocking the street at times and things like that, so you might wanna pay a little bit of attention to that.
Okay.
Okay?
Absolutely.
We appreciate you doing this for the community, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any audience communication on this matter? There is none, Ms. Miller, take the roll, please.
Vice President Toy?
Uh, aye.
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavick?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
President Jolly?
Aye. The motion passes, you have your noise waiver, good luck on the festival, we'll see you there.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Item number fourteen is a reg, roll call vote, a proposed amendment to Livonia 21 zoning ordinance, as amendment from the Department of Law regarding petition 2021-11-01-08 by Schoolcraft College to rezone property at 17950 College Parkway, formerly Unit 15 of College Park condominium, located on the east side of Hagerty Road between Six and Seven Mile Roads in the southwest quarter of Section 7, from C1 local business to PL public lands, first reading was offered by Mr. Donavick on March 14th of 2022. Mr. Donavick, do you wanna offer a second reading?
I will offer a second reading.
Any audience communication in regards to this matter? Any council communication? Ms. Miller, take the vote.
Vice President Toy?
Uh, aye.
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavick?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Aye.
President Jolly?
Aye. The motion passes. We will move on to item fifteen, roll call vote, proposed amendment to Livonia Vision 21 zoning ordinance as amended from the Department of Law, petition 2021-11-01-09, submitted by Schoolcraft College to rezone 17420 College Parkway, Unit 11 of the College Park condominium, east side of Hagerty, between Six and Seven Mile Roads in the southwest quarter of Section 7, from C4, high-rise commercial to PL public lands, first reading was offered by Mr. Morgan on March 14th, 2022. Mr. Morgan, you wanna offer a second reading?
Uh, yes.
We have a second reading on the floor.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Barr?
I'd like to speak to this, and actually, the, my comments on this are relative to the next item as well. So this is a situation where we've got properties that are owned by Schoolcraft College but are not zoned public land, um, they're currently zoned C4 and M2, um, and, well, the previous one, I, it made sense, that's connected to the rest of campus, uh, it's next to another Schoolcraft building, um, I, I don't have a problem with that one. These next two are situations where, um, I actually think behooves the city to keep these in their current zoning. The reason for that is by making them public land, when they're not public land, when they're in their current zoning, um, building projects like, to go there would have to come before us for a site plan. When they're the, when they're the public land, uh, they don't have the same requirements. And just because of the areas where those sit and what the surrounding businesses are, I think the city has an interest in having a say in, in what types of businesses or what the appearance of the site plans of those businesses are, just like we do on a number of other items, including one coming up later tonight. And, and I also just recognize that, well, while I, I will admit, I don't have the same level of heartburn over the, the Saint Joseph's Cathedral that I know some others do, I, I know other people on this council have expressed, um, you know, frustration with that, and the bottom line is, Schoolcraft has a lot of freedom to do whatever they wanna do, regardless of city ordinances. This is one case where a property that they own that's among other businesses is, is zoned in such a way that we have a say, and I don't see a need, they, they themselves have said they don't know what they wanna do with the property specifically at this time, I don't see a need to rezone this now, I will not be supporting this. Or the next one.
Any audience communication?
Mr. Chair?
Ms. Toy?
Is there anyone here from Schoolcraft by any chance?
Would you like to come on up to the podium?
Um, you know, if, if there's a concern, my concern would be too, we're rezoning, but we don't know what we're doing, it's kinda, you know, it's like, we're blind on this, um, help us understand that.
Sure, so this is really administrative.
Your name and address, please.
My name's Kevin Aoun, I'm here on behalf of Schoolcraft, I'm also Livonia resident, 15929 Shadyside. Um, so for Schoolcraft, this is really administrative and cleanup issues, because property that's owned by Schoolcraft that's gonna be dedicated for school purposes, one, should be public lands, and then, two, because we're our own unit of local government, we have our own autonomy, we answer to our own, uh, board of trustees who are elected officials, just like city council here, we have our own constitutional authority, we have our own statutory authority, so as long as we're within the confines of what's required there, it, this really is administrative and doesn't make a difference, so what are we trying to do? I think the one that's up right now was Unit 11, this is kind of an odd-shaped parcel, we actually tried to get this to a developer, that's why it's part of this condominium area that's there, and what happened is, there was no desire for development. Schoolcraft is relatively built out, we've done a lot of work on the soccer fields that I used to play on as a kid, and now we're in a position where we're looking for additional space. The idea with this parcel, because it is so wonky and nobody really wanted it, so the developer has now given it back to us, is really a storage unit, right? So we wanna create a warehouse-type facility that's gonna look nice, that's gonna be consistent with the area, but that we still have control, that's at least the thought, it's not binding, it's not written in stone, we don't have plans, we don't have drawings, we don't have any of that, but that's the mindset for at least this Unit 11, and I can address the other one at that time, too, if you'd like.
Well, if I may, Mr. Chair, um, Kevin, I'm sorry, I didn't catch your last name.
It's Aoun, A-O-U-N.
A-O-U-N. Mr. Aoun, um, as you say, these are school-related, I used to be a trustee at Schoolcraft College for seven years, um, and we started selling to Duke, that property that's on Seven Mile, that faces Seven Mile where Andiamos now is, and those big buildings there. That property has really come alive, and I'm proud of that for the college and all that, but certainly, some of that retail, I don't see how that's related to, to, to the educational purposes of Schoolcraft College. It certainly gave you guys some money and some land leases and things like that, and that's all well and good, but as we look at the further development of this property, that's all well and good, but as we look at the further development of this property, there's some concerns of, you know, what exactly is going to go on there? I think Councilman Barr brings up good points, so, you know, and I'm all about Schoolcraft, rah rah, I'd rather U of M right now, but you know, but in all seriousness, sir, we need some explanation to that. You know, rezoning is a serious thing, it really is, believe it or not, you know, otherwise you wouldn't be here tonight. So, you know, if, if you could give us, you're going to use it for warehouse, it sounds like?
Yeah, so, not set in stone, right? It's just the concept or nothing, there's no money that's been invested into the property, there's no drawings, there's nothing, right? We're just trying to figure out, what are we going to use it for? But we know we want it back into Schoolcraft's fold, we don't want it for non-school-related purposes, and so that's why this property, right, this one is the Unit eleven, that's why this property is one we want to rezone back to public lands. This is actually putting it back into public lands. It was taken out when we were trying to get it to the developers to make more economic use of it, now that can't be there and Schoolcraft's looking for additional space. So that's why we want it back in public lands and for us, it's cleanup, it really doesn't make a difference whether it's zoned, I think this one is the new zone, C four versus public lands for Schoolcraft's purposes. It really makes zero difference from a legal standpoint, how that property is zoned from how Schoolcraft's going to use it for school purposes. If we're going to use it like we did on Seven Mile, right, the air, or Eight Mile, is it Seven?
Seven.
Seven Mile where Andiamos is, right? You know, that property, I believe, is rezoned into commercial purposes, right? There's commercial zoning because it's out on a land lease for a long extended
Ninety-nine years.
Period of time. So because of that, right, it was rezoned for those commercial purposes. Now this is Schoolcraft for Schoolcraft purposes and it's just administrative cleanup to turn this into public.
But see, your argument is, you've, you've let that land go to a lot of other things besides college-related things, so now you're strapped for space. So whose real problem is that, vision-wise?
Well, there has.
Because you've got a Garden City campus, I don't know what other campuses you've built in recent times.
Actually, we were just.
Let's all stick on the, on the point here for this parcel eleven. Is your question answered, Ms. Toy?
I believe so, Mr. Chair. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much. We're going to go to Mr. Donovan.
Can I just address the Garden City one, just for a second?
Well, I mean, I think I can cut to the chase, you've sold it to Garden City.
Thank you.
It's got nothing to do with this now.
Great.
Mr. Donovan.
Thank you, Mr. President. So let me get this, understand this correctly, are you saying that your authority supersedes our zoning restrictions and, and our charter?
If, if the city of Livonia.
Is that why you're allowed to have a sign on your building bigger than any other business in our community?
Signage can be a different issue, okay? I believe that Schoolcraft has the authority, let me give you an example from a Michigan appellate court case, just, just by way of example to help explain this. There is a Michigan Department of Corrections case where they wanted to build, for lack of a better term, a halfway home or rehab facility in the city of Detroit in a residential area, fully against zoning purposes to have that. Court of Appeals came in and said, no, they're their own local unit of government, just like Schoolcraft is, they have the authority in the jurisdiction over theirs, unless there is a superseding statute that explicitly addresses that issue. Here there's.
You all sent Mr. Donovan.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Anybody from the audience like to address this further? I see none.
Mr. Chair.
I'm trying to move the meeting along, but Mr. McCullough, Mr. Morgan, who is?
Yes, yes, sir, I have a question for you, and I, I'm not sure myself, so I'm, I'm asking, so, as a, as it currently sits, does Schoolcraft pay the city taxes on this?
No.
Okay. So this is not a, this is not a tax thing where it gets switched over to public lands and then they don't have to pay taxes? As commercial use, it would have, they'd have to pay taxes, correct?
If it was being used for commercial purposes, not owned by Schoolcraft, yes, there would be taxes. Ever since this property was returned to Schoolcraft's possession and control, there have been no taxes generated, so this is a tax-neutral change.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. McCullough.
Thank you, President Jolly. Just, I'm looking at this postage-sized item as it sits as item, what is it, item fifteen?
This is eleven.
Eleven. Whoops, whatever, I'm way off on that. But the way it sits, I do agree that this is probably more of an administrative, I don't see that this little postage-sized piece of, of land is going to impact the city, however, if this was something in the past that could have some, some teeth to it, I might think differently. But everything you're saying, I don't see it being a big problem, at least for this specific item, and I don't, it's, again, you said this is more paperwork and cleaning up, it butts up to PL, I don't see any issue, I'll be supportive. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Barr.
Just, I won't reiterate what I said earlier, just a couple of points after hearing the comments. First of all, there's nothing about keeping this in this current zoning that keeps Schoolcraft College from using it for educational purposes. The next item is the item on Merriman Road, which is that exact situation, where it's zoned M four and they're using it for educational purposes, so this does not need to be rezoned for them to do that. And I will just, again, reiterate that we have a great example in the Saint Joe's Sports Dome about what happens when Schoolcraft does what Schoolcraft does and doesn't have to come before the city of Livonia. I, all in favor of whatever Schoolcraft, you know, I, I assume I'm in favor of what plans they would have for this property, I'm sure it will be fine. I just don't see a reason for us to return this to public land when right now it's in a zoning that allows us to have a say in the site plan. Thanks.
Ms. Miller, will you take the roll, please?
Vice President Toy. Councilmember Barr.
So it's an approving that we're talking about right now, right? Because he offered second reading?
It's a second read of the whole.
Second reading wasn't given yet, was it? Mr. Morgan gave second reading, get us started.
So we're essentially voting on approving, right?
Yes. Second reading functions as an approving.
Do you want to confirm that that was Ms. Toy's vote before I vote? I'd say today's, I just don't know.
Do you wish to, do you wish to approve the zoning change or do you wish to deny the zoning change?
I would like to go to committee of the whole if we could do that.
That's not the motion on the table, though.
Oh, that's too bad. I'm going to say no.
Got that, Ms. Miller?
Yes. Councilmember Barr.
No.
Councilmember Donovan.
No.
Councilmember Morgan.
No.
Councilmember McCullough.
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre.
Aye.
President Jolly.
No. The request to change the zoning for Unit eleven of College Park condominium fails, we'll move on to item number six. This is also a roll call vote, proposed amendment to Livonia Vision twenty-one zoning ordinance from the Department of Law, petition two zero two one 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 zero one zero, submitted by Schoolcraft College to rezone property at thirteen zero zero one Merriman Road, located on the west side of Merriman Road between Glendale and Schoolcraft Roads, in the northwest quarter of Section twenty-seven, from M two, general manufacturing to PL public lands. First reading was given by Mr. Morgan on March fourteenth of two thousand and twenty-two. Mr. Morgan, would you like to offer a second reading?
Yes, the same.
Okay, anybody from the council have anything to say on this matter? Ms. McIntyre?
On this one, I am, I am not inclined to support this, I supported the last one because of where the location was, to the point that my colleague, Mr. Barr, made earlier, nothing about the current zoning precludes Schoolcraft from doing what you've done there, which is placing your new outstanding manufacturing center, which I've had the opportunity to see, it's a phenomenal facility and gives you the space you needed to expand that program. However, if we return this to PL, and, and this is a, this is a stretch that is not adjacent to the Schoolcraft property, the city loses all control of what goes here, including signage. And for that reason, I, I am not supportive of this. Thank you.
Anybody else on the council? Seeing none, would you like to address this, sir?
Unless there's specific questions, I think we've had the discussion, so.
Thank you, sir. Any audience communication? We have somebody approaching the podium. Please state your name and address for the record, sir.
Hi, Steve Kaufman, eighteen thousand six hundred Hagerty, Livonia. I'm the chief operations officer for the college, I wasn't, I didn't have any prepared remarks or anything, but I just wanted to correct one of the statements from Member McIntyre, that it's not adjacent, this particular building is not adjacent to Schoolcraft property, it actually is adjacent to our Public Safety Training Center, it actually backs up to it, although the address is on Merriman Road, the back fence, which we, we have access to our thirteen-acre driving pad back there, so I just wanted to clarify a point.
Ms. McIntyre?
Thank you for that correction, I, I misspoke, it's not adjacent to your main campus as the other parcel is, I'm aware of its adjacency to the public safety facility, but.
Correct, we have three campuses and that's one of them.
Right, so thank you for that clarification and I misspoke, so thank you, I appreciate that.
Any other audience communication? Seeing none, Ms. Miller, take the roll.
Vice President Toy.
Aye.
Councilmember Barr.
No.
Councilmember Donovan.
No.
Councilmember Morgan.
No.
Councilmember McCullough.
No.
Councilmember McIntyre.
No.
President Jolly.
Aye. The motion fails, this item will also not be rezoned. We'll move on to item number seventeen, roll call, proposed amendment to Livonia Vision twenty-one, AS amended from the Department of Law, petition two zero two one zero seven zero one zero six, submitted by LAG Development to rezone property at three four eight oh one Plymouth Road, located on the south side of Plymouth Road between Stark and Wayne Roads in the northwest quarter of Section thirty-three, from C one local business to C two general business, first reading given by Mr. Barr on October eighteen, two thousand and twenty-one. Mr. Barr, would you like to offer a second reading?
I will offer a second reading.
Okay, anybody on the council like to address this matter? Mr. Donovan.
Thank you, Mr. President, I'm excited to see this go through. Unfortunately, the donut shop had to close down years ago, I was a big fan of it, I often would go to the Burger King next door, but unfortunately, that, the business is no longer there and now La Fontaine has been a good partner here and working with the city and coming to the city for approvals and, and being a good steward and partner with us, and I appreciate that partnership and working with us, and I look forward to seeing this as a successful business and tearing down an old building and, and adding some nice landscaping and making it vibrant, vibrant neighborhood right there, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Donovan. Anybody from the audience? Seeing none, Ms. Miller, will you take the roll?
Vice President Toy.
Aye.
Councilmember Barr.
Aye.
Councilmember Donovan.
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough.
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre.
Aye.
President Jolly.
Aye. The motion passes, we'll move on to eighteen, waiver petition from the Planning Commission regarding petition two zero two two zero one zero two zero one, submitted by LAG Development, requesting waiver use approval to demolish the existing commercial building and use property for storage and display of vehicles in connection with an automotive dealership, La Fontaine Hyundai of Livonia, three four eight oh one Plymouth Road, located on the south side of Plymouth Road between Stark and Wayne, northwest quarter of Section thirty-three, same piece of property as seventeen here, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion from Toy, support from McCullough, any comments from the council?
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Toy.
I think it's been said about the donut shop, but this really helps Plymouth Road, I appreciate La Fontaine coming in and, and sprucing up Plymouth Road, we need, we need a lot of help down, quite frankly, on Plymouth Road, I own a business down that way and we, I really welcome you to do whatever you can to your buildings and you always do a fine job, it seems. I think you actually own the auto world, La Fontaine, so, I, I'm not trying to be facetious, but it seems like you've really expanded and I appreciate you coming to Livonia and doing that. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Toy. Any communication from the audience? There's none, Ms. Miller, take the roll, please.
Vice President Toy.
Aye.
Councilmember Barr.
Aye.
Councilmember Donovan.
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough.
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre.
Aye.
President Jolly.
Aye, the motion passes, moving on to number, number nineteen, rezoning petition, Planning Commission.
There's a, there's a part B.
Oh, I'm sorry.
There's two resolutions.
Do I have a motion for part B? Is there a second motion?
So, so moved, I'll move.
Is Toy supporting that?
Yes, please.
Okay, motion by McIntyre, support by Toy. Any council communication? Seeing none, audience, none, Ms. Miller, take the roll.
Vice President Toy.
Aye.
Councilmember Barr.
Aye.
Councilmember Donovan.
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough.
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre.
Aye.
President Jolly.
Aye. Motion for part B also passes, now on to nineteen, rezoning petition from the Planning Commission, petition two zero two zero dash zero eight zero one zero six, submitted by Middlebelt Plymouth Venture LLC to rezone parts of the properties at two nine seven oh seven and three zero two seven three Plymouth Road, located on the south side of Plymouth Road between Middlebelt and Milburn Avenue, in the northeast quarter of Section thirty-five, from C two general business to N M two, neighborhood multifamily. A public hearing on this matter was held on Monday, March seven, two thousand and twenty-two. Do I have any motions from the council?
To get this item moving, I will move approval.
Support.
We have approving for purposes of discussion from McIntyre, support from Barr. Council, comments?
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Toy.
I think a lot of comments were made already at the public hearing, that's not to preclude anyone getting up to the microphone. There's obviously a lot of concern about this particular site and the property itself in regards to what is being proposed there. I think that the proposed folks that are the petitioners have done some good things in our community. I'm not so sure I can support this for where it's at and how it affects our neighborhoods and our taxpayers there, so I will not be supporting it tonight, and I'm hoping others might look into their hearts and souls and realize if they live there, would they want that staring down at them? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Toy. I'll note for the record here, the item before the council tonight is not a binding substantive motion, but rather a motion to refer this matter to the law department to prepare language of an ordinance that we would vote on in the future. That's all this does at this time is request the law department to draft language that would be voted on in the future, and that future vote would be determinative and substantive in this matter. Anybody else in the council?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Barr.
I unfortunately was not able to be hearing on this, so I just want to make a few comments, I had a family commitment that night, but I, I've obviously, this has been a known petition for a long time, I've been following along, you know, through news and social media and things, you know, going back to at least last summer, I think, and knew this would be coming before us eventually, so there's been a lot of time to think about this. In that time, I, I've seen, you know, a lot of concerns expressed, and with this latest proposal, I think a lot of those concerns have been addressed. I, President Jolly, I, I appreciate your comment about what this being on zoning, so I will try to limit my comments here about what's been proposed because there will be site plan that comes later, and the neighbors probably know this by now because this has been through so many meetings, but if this were to pass tonight, or pass, if it were to move forward, it would just be with a first reading and then there'd be a second reading of vote on the rezoning, and then we still have to approve the site plan, so I know the petitioner's done a lot of work with the site plan already in order to help this discussion, but it is just a zoning tonight. So as it relates to zoning, you know, this property obviously has been commercial for a long, long time, it's been intended to be commercial, but it's also been, this particular property's been undeveloped for fifteen years and it's been undeveloped for a reason, probably multiple reasons, but one of the things, we've talked about this even as we talked about the, the big change to our zoning ordinance recently, that, one of the things we're going to have to deal with is the city and all municipalities are going to have to deal with going forward, is there's just not the need for retail zoning that there used to be. We, we all are familiar with the reasons why that is, but we're, we're going to continually face this issue as a city where we've got properties zoned as retail that it's difficult to fill, and, and I think this is one of those. So I understand where the, where the owner of the property is coming from in, in looking for alternatives. I will also note from a zoning perspective, I, I know the concerns with this being, you know, going to a neighborhood multifamily, look, anytime, we've said this before and Look, anytime, we've said this before and you all know this, anytime there's a development, the neighbors are always concerned. That's not to, that's not to minimize that. It's that their concerns are valid and, and it's a huge factor in our decision-making, but it's, but it's one factor. And, and then when you're talking about this type of zoning, I'm very, very familiar with the, with the concerns with that, okay? In this case, what's been proposed, there is literally a football field of distance, literally a football field, it's a hundred yards, between what they're proposing for this building and the neighborhood behind. We're talking about, they're, they're talking about putting a vinyl fence on top of a berm. You know, the, the sightlines have been addressed and the alternative, if they were able to fill this with commercial property, I think for the neighbor's sake, the alternative, which is another commercial property like a Walmart or a Target, I actually think is way more intrusive to the neighborhood than, than what this is. And frankly, your comments on that make that case based on your complaints about Walmart and Target. So, for those reasons and looking at the zoning tonight, I'm, I'm willing to move this forward and continue to have this discussion based on what's been provided to us. Thanks.
Anybody else in the council? Ms. McIntyre?
I'm not gonna echo everything that Mr. Barr just said. He said it very well, but I am going to support this going to law for rezoning because I understand the concerns with apartments and I think anybody who's followed this council knows the, the due diligence we do on approving multifamily units. I agree one hundred percent with Mr. Barr that a multifamily, the right multifamily development is a much lower intensity of use than another big box store. And I also do not think that what we have there right now, which is really a very unattractive piece of property, is, helps that, helps that development, helps the neighborhood around it. So, I am going to support moving this forward, again with a reminder, this is not approval of the site plan or the specific property that's going in there. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Anybody else in the council? Mr. Morgan?
Yes, I just wanted to say that I, I spent a lot of time talking to the residents in that community and your voices have been heard and I am not gonna be in support of this at this time. So, that's it.
Mr. President.
Mr. Donavich?
Thank you, Mr. President. Typically, I'd like to wait until further down the line in the process to talk at great lengths about this, but I'll try to keep my comments short for tonight. I am gonna support this, this potential rezoning to go through to the Law Department and draft documents. Some of my colleagues echo that I think it is more intrusive, a commercial building a hundred feet away from backyards than a multifamily three hundred feet away from, from the backyards. I want to see innovative developments in our area. Quite frankly, I ran on the revitalization of the East Side Livonia. This is a thirty million dollar potential project as opposed to another big box store that could be vacant within the next ten to fifteen years. I want to see more housing availability in Livonia. People want to come to Livonia and people wanna spend money to live in our community. I think this isn't your typical apartment complex that is sometimes a negative connotation with them. I think this is a very nice apartment complex. Quite frankly, it mimics exactly the apartment complex over on Eight Mile and Hagerty area and it's beautiful and, and that's almost fully leased. It's been less than a year and almost all two hundred units are leased at almost two thousand dollars a month. People want to come to Livonia and they wanna live in our city. They won't necessarily always wanna purchase a home, but they wanna live in Livonia. I just think that another big box store is just going to be more intrusive on residents a hundred feet away with semi trucks coming and going, backing into loading docks all night long throughout the day. If you look at the, the traffic volume from commercial buildings, I'm no engineering expert, but I'd say that there's more vehicles that come and go from a commercial complex like a Walmart, like a Target on a daily basis than a residential multifamily neighborhood. There's gonna be about two hundred people there, give or take, with their residents, with their friends and family that come there as opposed to a commercial big box store that there's hundreds, if not thousands, of people that travel through that store on a daily to weekly basis. So, I'm gonna support tonight, but I'm gonna continue to communicate with residents, continue to communicate with the petitioners. This is a long process and I think there's a lot of good that can be done throughout this process through the site plan and I do thank everybody that reached out and emailed me and phone calls and continue to be accessible if anybody would like to talk to me. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Donavich. Mr. McCullough?
Thank you, Mr. President. This one, we've seen, you know, for a lot of times over the last year pretty much and I appreciate the developer for bringing all the plans forward. I still struggle with this specific development creating harmony in the area. That's what our master plan was, was meant for. I don't see this specific plan being conducive to creating harmony with the, the surrounding businesses and even the homes behind. For that reason, I will not be supporting this. Thank you.
So, at this point, we have an approving motion on the floor to send this matter to the Department of Law to draft an ordinance. Like I said, that is not a substantive vote. It would just refer to law. They would bring back an ordinance change that would come before us. At that time when it was before us, it would require a first reading. No votes would be taken at that time. At a subsequent meeting after that one, a second reading would take place. It has been the tradition of the Livonia City Council that second readings on zoning changes in cases like this do not take place until we have a site plan to go along with it so we can consider the entire package altogether at one time. Be two items, but side by side, so we knew exactly what we were looking at. With that being said, audience communication, anybody who would like to address the council in regards to this matter, come on up to the podium. You are limited to two minutes. I'll ask you to start off by stating your name and address. We do have the petitioners here tonight. Like I did in the past, I'll ask you to keep track of the comments that are made. I'll ask you to come up at the end and address anything that you would like to at that time. Yeah. It's also a good idea here for all of our sake of time insanity. If you would like to speak on this matter, if you're planning on speaking, please start to come on to this side of the room to be ready so we can go in an orderly queue here, okay? Good evening, sir. Your name and address, please.
Petershamshot nine nine five zero Oporto. I just wanna reiterate, there's some council people that weren't here last time about the rat issue we currently have. Since then, Showstack last time said they would plan on four to six dumpsters, I believe, on a two hundred unit complex. I went around and looked at other complexes. It's every twelve units, there's a dumpster. Their response to that was, I think they would empty them once a day or every other day. I don't know of any complex that does that. It's not cost effective. Being two hundred units, I would estimate an average of four hundred people living there that would have a driver's license. I believe Showstack said last time that the, at the time people would leave would be between six AM and nine AM. On an optimum day, that'd be a hundred and thirty-three vehicles added to the current traffic that's there between six and nine every hour to go through that area. That's a lot of vehicles added to, to the traffic we have now. If you had a big box store, it'd be the same people going to Walmart or Target. I think the traffic wouldn't be near as heavy and it'd be spread out all day. It wouldn't be centered between six and nine and four and seven. So, I think the traffic would be horrendous. I think the garbage issue would be like putting a buffet in front of the, the rats that are currently there. I think our issues with rats would drastically go up. I think if it was a big box store...
Ten seconds, sir.
There, there, there are people, they have employees to maintain those areas. If they don't do their job, they fire them, put somebody else in. It's...
You're all set, sir. You've reached your two minutes. I appreciate your comments.
Thank you for your time and listening.
Thank you, sir. Thanks for coming out tonight. We'll take the next petitioner. Or, excuse me, the next audience communication person. Your name and address, sir?
My name is Bill Schmidt. I live at two nine six eight eight McIntyre. Not related to Kathleen. There's, there's nothing like this development within miles. There's nothing in section thirty-six or in section thirty-five. Ms. Toy, anything in section thirty-four?
Sir?
How about thirty-three? No? How about section twenty-five? Twenty-six? Section twenty-seven? Twenty-eight? My point is, is that for miles around, there is not a similar kind of development. Nothing. The closest thing is way up on Five Mile. This does not belong in a single-family home neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other audience communication? Okay. Again, I'm gonna ask you to be ready. Sir, your name and address, please.
Hi there. Merlin Smith, three zero zero three nine Richland in Livonia. First off, I'd like to start, could I have everybody for non rezoning to stand up?
We're not, excuse me, sir. We're not gonna do that.
We're not gonna do that?
No, we're not. You can address the council.
All right. You sure show a lot of stuff then. You got enough to vote on this tonight. It's been going on for almost two years. Please don't send it to a committee, okay? Us residents been going through this for two years now. You got enough. I, I can tell by what everybody was saying, which I could hardly hear, the speakers are stinky. You got enough to vote on it tonight. Either put it through or deny it. There's only one casting the vote here or, you know, that's gonna make the decision and we all know who that is, okay? So, we have a lot of residents here showing and the only other thing I have to say is what happened to family first in Livonia.
Thank you, sir. Next. Any other audience communication? Good evening, ma'am. State your name and address, please.
Good evening. Victoria Kowalewski, two nine nine six zero Orange Lawn, abiding the property that the petitioners are requesting rezoning for. In my prepared remarks for the last meeting, I had typed the following. Personally, I think it's quite possible that Walmart at Wonderland Village isn't performing as expected and a tri-level apartment complex in my backyard will yield more sales slash customers. That's neither here nor there, just a bit of musing on my part. But lo and behold, when we met last, one of the petitioner's reps said that. The apartment complex will help the neighboring businesses survive. Please note, the petitioner is making money from those neighboring businesses. So, again, I say, this is all about the petitioner's pocket, not about our neighborhood, not about Livonia first, family first. It's about his pocket. Thank you so much. Have a blessed night and I appreciate my counsel.
Thank you, ma'am. Normally, what we do if there's a lot of people who wanna speak is try and line up behind the podium so we can go one after the other here. Your name, sir?
Good evening. My name is Daniel Peluski, twenty-eight, five hundred Cleveland. I just wanna say that, would you build something like that behind your house? Ask yourself that. Would you wanna get out on Saturday afternoon with your kids and look at a big building or deal with two hundred, three hundred car traffic or any matters of that? I think if these guys really wanna help the community, build something like an indoor soccer arena or something like golf, they'll attract the people that live in the city to wanna stay in the city. As far as me thinking, hey, I wanna buy a house in Livonia, I don't know. These guys wanna put something that's three-story building. I get it. You guys wanna make the money for the city. Well, then there's all the ways that will attract to stay, the people to stay in the city, not, oh my God, what am I thinking now? I wanna move out. I don't know what this is gonna bring. All I'm thinking is HAVOC. That's all. I, I think there are better ways these guys could build something better to make people stay in the city, not make them wanna leave. That's all I gotta say. Let's have a good night.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, ma'am. Your name and address?
Charlotte Pu, two nine eight six four Orange Lawn and I'm against it because of the fact that we still, to this day, cannot get anything handled per Walmart with the trucks and everything else coming in and we've had the Law Department, we've had everybody, basically the mayors up to our homes to try to handle this Walmart issue and we still have never accomplished any agreement on any of it yet, to this day. We still have trucks that are back there vibrating and doing whatever else. Who knows? I don't care what kind of fences you put up, there are still ways to go around these things and we have people now looking into our yard still. Can you imagine what's gonna happen once they have all these people there? They haven't been able to support anything they have said so far, so I just, I disagree with all of it. And if it was your backyard, there you go. So, imagine looking out in your own yard. You can use our yards and look to see what you think it was like, look like. I have pictures of truck drivers on my phone that you can see face to face, almost in my back door. So, let's try to resolve that first before even say yes to this, please. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. I see no audience communication. We'll go petitioner. Is there anything you'd like to address? Please try to keep it to two minutes if you can.
I just want a quick question, a clarification, council president. So, the materials that we sent in advance, you guys have all reviewed those, so you don't have the intent that you want us to walk through that tonight?
No, this, like I said before, this is a non-substantive vote. This is just directing the Law Department to create something that we would vote on in the future.
Okay, perfect. Just wanted to make sure. Well, thank you, everyone, and we appreciate residents' feedback and councils' feedback. So, I'll try to keep this brief and I just kinda wanted to highlight some of the things we have done based on feedback from the council and the residents. There's been a lot of talk about the dumpsters and, you know, what that, you know, the rats that had come to that. You know, just to be clear, the dumpsters that are closest to the residents, Walmart and Target owns those, controls those. We have unfortunately no control over that. The dumpsters that we actually do own and control closer to Plymouth, the Middlebelt Road where the retail is, we actually have rat traps in those dumpsters and we don't, have never had a complaint on that. As far as with the dumpsters in the residential, those are multiple weekly pickups and so it really does not allow enough time for anything to fester that attracts wildlife. Then briefly, I just wanted to mention on the security front, 'cause I know that was kinda talked about at prior meetings, is we have added the perimeter fencing around the entire site. We are doing the, as you saw in the package, the gates that will close after five PM that are key entry only, so you'll have to be a resident to get through there. And then we also are installing twenty-four-hour, three sixty-five high-definition security video cameras all around the building that are in plain sight, so people see them. They have facial recognition software. They have license plate reading software. So, in the event if there is an issue, you know, you get to the bottom of this immediately. It's saved on the cloud for thirty days. So, if there's a bad actor, we, you catch them because of all this information and obviously that will deter future bad actors. And then lastly, just wanted to touch on briefly on the walkability of making this a mixed-use development. I think you all saw in the package, all the things that we added, the sidewalks, the brick paved sidewalks, greenery, sit-down areas, and it really connects well, so just wanted to add that. Thank you.
I didn't ask you to state your name and address.
Oh, I'm sorry. Jeffrey Showstack, Showstack Brothers, seventeen eight hundred Laurel Park Place Drive, Livonia.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Miller, will you take the vote on this matter?
Vice President Toy?
Could you repeat the motion again?
So, the motion at this time is to refer the matter, it's an approving motion to refer the matter to the Law Department to draft ordinance language. That's it. This is non-substantive. It is not determining what will happen ultimately.
That's debatable, but that's okay. No.
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavich?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
No.
Councilmember McCullough?
No.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
President Jolly?
Aye. The Law Department will draft ordinance language that will be voted on at a later date. Thank you all for coming out tonight. Thank you, those who have shared comments. That concludes our agenda for this evening. I will go back to council communication. Any communications from the council? Ms. McIntyre?
Thank you. Councilmember Jolly, at the beginning, I started on a somber note and I wanted to, to not say anything else, to make sure that we were just focused on extending our condolences to the Angerbretson family. On a happier note, I'd like to thank the Senior Center folks for an outstanding St. Patrick's Day drive-through luncheon that we had on St. Patrick's Day. And again, because the guidelines were not to allow a large gathering, they are amazing in what they come up with and it was Irish stew, Irish soda bed, Irish soda bread baked by Carl, the director of the Senior Center, and we had, I think, over a hundred and fifty seniors who came through and enjoyed lunch and a cookie and dessert and some special prizes. So, thank you to our outstanding team at the Senior Center.
Thank you very much. Any closing audience communication on an item that was not on the agenda? Good evening, sir. State your name and address, please.
Yes, good evening. Ishmael Terry, nine nine zero one West Parkway Street, Detroit, Michigan, and Reford Charter I'm coming today because I am looking forward to being you guys' next state representative. As you know, the redistricting took place. It moved my Rouge area into the Livonia area as well as the Reford Charter Township. So, I have twenty-six years of legislation behind my back. I've been doing this since two thousand, really, starting from Eastern Michigan all the way down till now currently. I sit on the board for the Zoning Committee for the City of Detroit. So, I know all about your rezoning issues that you are going through, 'cause we doing the same exact things in the City of Detroit. Let me give you a brief history about me. Starting in oh four, I worked with Congressman John Conyers as well as Clyde Cleveland, who was a legend in the City of Detroit as a city council member, countless county commissioners. I know Mike Cox for a long time as well. I served up as the community liaison in the Michigan House of Representatives in oh four to oh eight. And by oh eight to two thousand and eleven, I was chief of staff up there during the appropriation committees where George Cushionberry Jr., as well as Jennifer Grant Home and Andy Dillon and all the rest, Mike Bishop as well. So I have a long, rich history in legislation. Two thousand and nineteen, where I just currently left as the Legislative Policy Director in the Michigan House of Representatives. So in me, you have a strong representation. I'm gonna sit with all of you. As you can tell, I come into your community. Recently, we created a newsletter that gives an opportunity to people in the community to show what you are doing in your neighborhoods. It's a great newsletter to have. It's totally free. It allows you to be able to share with everyone in your communities, in your district. So my name is Ishmael Terry. I'm a guy you really, truly can trust. I have moved money all over this state. I actually had a chance to work in the White House for the My Brothers Keepers Initiative to keep young black men and young ladies from going to prison and going to college. So I have a long, rich history in this, and I'm asking for your support. I really am. I know as difficult as it is in this redistricting, but I'll tell you, believe in what I can do. Trust what I can do, 'cause I've shown it year in and year out. So thank y'all for having me and my wife, Bridget. She didn't have to be here, but she wanted to support her husband. But I tell you this, I really respect all of you because I've been there before. So thank y'all for having me again. You can find me on our website, teamterrytwentytwentytwo.com. That's twenty, that's teamterrytwentytwentytwo.com. And look at our platform. Thank you.
I gotta cut you off. I was gonna compliment you there on sticking to three minutes. You came pretty close. Couple last words there kinda put you over. Any other audience communication? I see none.
I would offer a motion to adjourn.
Support.
Motion to adjourn from McIntyre, support from Toy. Ms. Miller, take the vote, please.
Absolutely. Vice President Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavick?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
President Jolly?
Aye. The meeting is adjourned. We will reconvene at eight forty-two for the study meeting, and we'll try and move along through that quickly. Thank you.